Call meeting to our cite the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve. Uh, the agenda as revised.
So moved.
Second.
Out of favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Uh, see no presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements. Anybody here for public comment? See any open, close? Uh, can get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hmm, no public hearings. We're with the general business and we'll address award a contract for well number five.
So, city council?
Uh, city council's being asked to award contract to RH Renner um for construction of well number five. This is a firm capacity well or a backup well. Uh, maybe I'll have Cory give a brief explanation as to the need for the project.
Yeah, so firm capacity well is what has to be done when basically firm capacity is your capacity with your highest producing well offline. So, right now, we have three wells that pump to the plant. Say, well four is offline at eight hundred and thirty-five gallons a minute, you are limited to twelve hundred and thirty gallons a minute total. So, i- it's basically insurance. In case a well goes down, you have a backup. Because even if we were uh two hundred gallons a minute short, you're short. You don't have water. We have no other way to do it. So that's basically what your firm capacity, what this well is for. It will move into probably a production well and rotation as things progress, but right now, it's basically for backup, and that's it.
Um, we did get three bids for um the well. Um, the bid from EH Renner was very close to the engineer's estimate. The other two from Mineral Service Plus and Shroud Companies were notably more, and both of those were very close, uh, you'll note. So we do feel that the bids that we got are as good as we're gonna get in the current market, so we would recommend award.
This was, this was also a recommendation in our uh water source treatment, uh, the twenty twenty-four water system study update that was done last year. Obviously, you guys weren't on council at that time, but it, I believe it came back to the council in October of last year. So this is one of the recommendations. When you design for capacity, uh, that the DNR requires that you design for firm capacity. So it's, it's not just something that we're just doing, it's part of a longer process.
So, strange question, do you feel that we're doing this because of the future residential plating that we're doing, just in case there's an overabundance of use and one of our wells goes down? Is that a concern?
Well, I mean, it's firm capacity.
So we need it today?
Yeah.
I, I get that, but do you think it's?
So, so right, right now, if uh, pipe line at least making, if both of our high service pumps are pumping, so we're pumping water, the Alco side pumping water, the New Market side. The, uh, the New Market side is twelve hundred gallons a minute. New Market side is six hundred. If we can only pump, say, well four is down, and we can only pump twelve hundred gallons a minute, we are six hundred gallons a minute short. We have some capacity in a tower, but we have a hundred and fifty thousand gallons if the Alco tower is full and two hundred and fifty of the New Market towers full and five hundred under the plant. But that doesn't buy you, I, this i- it's, it's not, firm capacity is for more than a day or an hour. It could be, if you have a well that goes down, it could be weeks. And if your life is anything like mine, things happen at about the worst time, not when you have, you know, a ton of capacity. So, I don't foresee anything happening, but also, I don't wanna be the one who says we don't have any water either. So, yes, I do believe it's needed.
So this by no means has anything to do with Niagara and a second phase or anything, correct? Just wanna clarify that for anyone.
No, this is what our capacity is right now.
Perfect, thank you.
Do we need to make a motion to approve the, award the contract, or?
Correct. So, uh, the council would need to make a motion to award the contract to EH Renner and Sons pursuant to the city engineer's recommendation.
Aye, we'll motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Reports.
So, uh, our item under administration tonight is just review and direction related to twenty twenty-six utility fund budgets. As the council's aware, our process is to go through and do our utility fund and rate analysis, which we did last month. This is really just incorporating the direction that we received at that meeting into the draft budget. All we're really looking for tonight is any direction from the council for any changes, um, based on what's presented to you. If there is none, then we would move forward, make any updates necessary based on new information before final budget adoption, but these are essentially the final drafts of the, at this point, the final draft of the utility fund budgets.
I have nothing.
Nothing for me.
Public works. Anything else?
Um, I have really nothing to add, other than it's been nice out, so we're not flowing snow right now, which is good, but uh, that could turn at any given time. Hydrant flushing got done last week. Nothing special going on right now.
Chief.
Excuse me for sitting back there, I don't want to get anyone sick. Uh, the only thing that we really have that's the big issue is we're, uh, we have three unfilled positions, so it's kind of a push right now to try and get this full. Uh, we have one person in background, and then we do currently have an ad out right now, um, to try and fill the other two positions, but that's kind of our big priority and our big push right now.
I see that your calls are down from last year year-to-date.
Yeah. Yeah, they're gonna fluctuate. Um, if you look the last couple of years, they've been pretty, um, pretty flat, you know, up and down a little bit year-to-year, but um, I think we're in that kind of plateau where the days when I first started in twenty-ten with the recession and kind of the department having been disbanded, or whatever term you wanna use to, it's kind of the Wild West, to now we're a little more stable. And as the population starts to increase, you'll see the call volume go up, but it's probably gonna be a little, little flat for, for right now, for the next couple of years. Which is, is not bad, um, gives us time to kind of do other things too, to kind of work on other things.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief.
Um, working on the EMTs, as I told you last night, so we got seven guys that'll be going this spring. Uh, we're working on class right now. Nordfield Hospital doesn't do our training anymore, but they do our refresher, but they don't do the new stuff, but we do got a guy down there that's gonna do it, so we're working on that. As you know, the CPR class kind of got on its way. We started with Niagara, did the city. Saturday, they did, they need money that was fire-related, and I think they had one person from the city that was here too, I guess, Kevin said. So next year, the cost of that fire relief's gonna pick that up. It's, I think we figured it was about forty-five hundred bucks or something like that if we did it once a month. That's kind of where we're gonna start on that for next year, and kind of see how the year goes. So, if it keeps, if there's big interest or whatever, we know we're gonna end up charging down the road, which is kind of, we'll pick it up next year for sure, and we'll, we'll see how it goes for next year, and that's kind of how it's gonna play out right now. So, um, that is supposed to be probably coming online, um, first of the year.
Right around the first of the year.
Is what we're thinking, we'll roll it out to the citizens in that area. So, and it will be free for next year for sure. It'll be all paid for throughout.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
That forty-five hundred dollars a month, how many classes is that?
No, so that's, that would cover for the year. We figured out, we just basically, it would do one class a month, and that would cover the cost of the materials that you have to buy and stuff like that. It'd come down to about forty-two hundred bucks if we did one class a month, if you had a full class.
Okay.
So, that's the plan right now, we do one a month and kind of see, it kind of see how it takes off, we're just gonna go get the demand for it. If the demand's higher, then we'll kind of build in whatever we need to do, so. Right now, we're good for that, we'll take care of the cost for that next year for sure, and then we'll decide if maybe we charge the people twenty dollars or thirty dollars, but it costs about thirty bucks, I think, in books and materials to put something through.
Very cool.
So we got four guys doing that. Radios just showed up today, I just seen them in the office, we did get a grant for one of them, so radios right now are about forty-eight hundred dollars, so we do get a grant for one through computer financial. So that will be getting programs, we'll give them in our deal, and then that's about it, we're at about three hundred and fifty calls for the year, which is, we're gonna be up a little bit from last year.
Awesome.
Can I ask about the, you had said you had seven people interested in going to EMT class?
Yep.
How many days a week is that?
So that's gonna be their, right now, it's set for like Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Okay.
What they would do, and then they, you have some Saturdays that are thrown in there. They're scheduled with the Saturday now, we're still kind of working with that.
Are you gonna send all seven at the same time?
Yes.
Any concern about um response, having seven guys gone to, okay?
Four hours a night.
Okay.
I mean, we send guys to school, it's not, we still got plenty of time. And it's at night call, so most everybody's around anyway, so it'd be in the evening, so.
Okay.
So, we got one that's in right now, he went on his own, so he's trying to get part of the equities on part of the department on their duty crews, so he'll pay for his if he goes and gets it back. So, it's kind of what's happening, so.
Okay.
That's it, that's all I got.
Sounds good.
Alright, thanks guys.
Thank you.
Your turn, sir. Joke first.
Good evening. Um, yeah, there's a, there's a update in your packet with updates on various items.
Dad joke?
Oh, you wanna start with dad joke, sorry, I thought you wanted that, I thought, figured we'd end with it, but you know what, yeah, we'll, we'll break the ice and start, my apologies.
Uh, given, given we're only a couple of weeks out from Thanksgiving, I figured that's the route we'd go with this one.
Why did the cranberries turn red? Because they saw the turkey dressing. Sorry to keep you hanging there, but as I was saying, yeah, uh, updated, updates in the, in the packet there, updates on various items, uh, in particular, um, the water quality complaints response plan, uh, some updates on that, as well as we posed a few questions to you that we'd like for you to discuss tonight. Primarily focused on the notifications to folks and, and uh, how we wanna respond to the aquifer pump test-related complaints. So as you're aware, the, the initial mailing went out with two and a half mile radius, those went out in August of twenty twenty-four. Since then, we have received a handful additional, uh, primarily after the last council meeting that we discussed the matter in September twenty-fifth. So just looking for some direction on, as we try to kind of wrap that up and, and, and get this, continue to move with this, but um, first of all, the first question being, if, if people weren't, you know, within the two and a half mile radius, if they were, received the initial questionnaire and how to respond to that, is there any action on staff to, if we didn't receive anything from them, to follow up with them again? This is the first question, is that?
Yeah, so, as, as Rich is working on preparing the offer letters, and we plan on the ones that cleanly fall within the parameters that the council had identified, um, for compensation letters, um, those will go out next week, but as we're working through, there are these, you might say, complaint adjacent.
Yep.
Ones where they didn't fall neatly in that box, um, or we just didn't talk about it at that granular level, and we're seeking additional guidance, so those in, clear ones will go out. These are, are the, are these individuals that we would want to still include in that group with a second round of letters that would go out? So, the first question is really, was there a reason, the parameters the council provided is, you contacted us, um, and notified us that you had an issue, and we sent out a follow-up questionnaire. And what we found is that when we sent, we either received complaints after the aquifer test, and then we received some additional complaints after we sent out the notice for the well owners meeting in August of twenty twenty-four, and in there, there was a whole paragraph about, we're receiving complaints, if you're receiving complaints, here's what you need to do to nine hundred and thirty-five property owners who may have a well, um, either had or may have a well. The question is, is that we generally had some follow-up to that, but it was a pretty much a dry spell until after the September council meeting. During that window, there were only, and since, um, that notice back in twenty twenty-four, there's only been nine that we have received. Six of those, or two-thirds of them, were received after the September twenty-fifth meeting of this year, where we talked about potential compensation for impact. So the first question is, is there a reasonable cutoff for when you would be eligible to receive compensation for this? The obvious undertone is, um, was, people were, is, you cared enough to send it in, and why did it, why did we get notified only after the city had discussed that there would be compensation involved? So we want a direction on that item init, at first. The second one, the, the next big question is really about those people that were greater than two and a half miles away and less than three and a half, because there were people who did file complaints, um, outside of the two and a half miles, and the council did include people that were greater than two and a half miles and less than three and a half miles that showed up to the council meeting, but there are well owners out there who may not have, who legitimately did not receive that notice, that the other nine hundred and thirty-five potential well owners did. And the question is, how do you want to handle those? Is there a, um, if they contacted us before the twenty-fifth, or some point after that, et cetera, how do you wanna handle those? At this point, we have not received anybody fro, that falls into that category that didn't already contact us prior to the twenty-fifth or was at that meeting. But we think there is a possibility that as word gets around that there are checks being cut, that we might see people contacting us about that. So, those are the two key areas, um, that we're looking for. The first question, where in the memo it says, does August twenty-four, August twenty twenty-four notification to well owner of the issue and how to file a complaint disqualify that owner from being included in this review? Essentially, it is, I think that's just the initial higher-level question, that if we notified you, and we can verify that you received a notice and you, and you did not follow up, does that automatically disqualify you for consideration at this point, regardless of, regardless of timeframe? And then the other two questions are a little bit more nuanced based on specific situations.
And I just have a quick question, why was there no, like, cutoff date included in the original notification?
Um, lack of foresight, because we, well, we, at that time, there, we were just collecting information. It wasn't intended that we're planning for people to notify us that we're gonna be doing, providing any sort of compensation, because we didn't have enough information and didn't know what was going on at that point. We hadn't completed our research, so this was more of, it was more informational, um, that, hey, if you had a, if you had a concern, please contact us. So, that was based on the, our inability to anticipate that we would be at this particular point in time now. We just wanted people to notify us if they have a problem, so we could collect information. It was subsequent to that, that a decision was made related to compensation after we determined what the cause was.
So the August twenty-fourth notification that went out, that was to nine hundred and thirty-five?
In twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four.
In twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty twenty-four, that was nine hundred and thirty-five people.
Correct.
Okay, out of that nine hundred and thirty-five people, dude, how many did you say we heard from?
Um, I believe it's earlier in the memo, I wanna say it's somewhere around twenty, less than thirty, it's like twenty-one or something to date. We're still, we're still, uh, of individuals, are you talking about individuals that would be eligible for the?
I'm, I'm just talking about, in August of twenty-four, when we sent that notification of the issue to nine hundred and thirty-five people, did anyone write back, email back, anything within shortly after August of twenty-four, before September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five?
Um, I don't, I don't have those specific numbers, but in the memo, it indicates that the number of individuals that contacted us after December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four was nine.
But that doesn't include if they contacted us via that special email address, right?
No, this is everybody, this is all, this, this is the context. After. After, after August of twenty twenty-four.
Yep.
Individuals that contacted us before the end of twenty twenty-four was nine.
Okay.
Um, that contacted us after the end of December thirty-first. I do not have a number for who contacted us between August and December, I just have a number for who contacted us after December. And that was just used as a reasonable date, 'cause it's a notable timeframe, and it was four months after the notice was sent out. I know that we did have people contact us from when we sent that notice out, I just don't have that information available to me right now.
For this, it'd be my preference that everybody's here on the council, um, as we're, we're starting to drill into it. That's my preference.
I, I'm going to agree with you on that, Mayor. I think it's very important that we have Amanda and Josh here, because they were here in twenty twenty-four as well.
And one thing I do have to point out is that we're just determining who would be eligible for the, the low threshold three hundred dollar compensation. We will respond to all complaints that we've received, but they would go in, if they aren't eligible for the immediate three hundred dollar offer, they would just go into the all other complaints category and would be dealt with on a case-by-case basis as we're working through those.
Did they indicate anything, um, an opinion when, in any meeting that you had with them, as far as what they would've thought, or on their opinion on it, on the questions?
Of the, these individuals?
Yeah.
I haven't had conversations, I can't tell you if I've had conversations with these individuals or not.
Amanda and Josh, did they weigh in at all on this?
Um, the only feedback I got is Josh said he would be comfortable with whatever decisions you guys made on agenda items tonight. Um, Amanda didn't give any specific feedback on, on this item.
I mean, this is just a sensitive issue all the way around, and I just, again, my preferences that they're here.
Yeah, the, the, our big push right now is to get out the letters to the individuals who, um, met the criteria that the council previously identified. These are, I guess you'd say, these are potential additional ones. The timing isn't as sensitive, except to the fact that they're gonna get a, that letter later than other individuals.
If we wait on this, does that delay us getting those letters out?
No, we're still moving forward, so the, the other ones that clearly fit within the criteria identified, those are planned to go out next week.
It's the nine that we're, we're discussing of whether you lumped them in with?
It's, it's really these additional nine, and then anybody else that might come in outside of that, that's in that, beyond two and a half and less than three and a half, do you wanna create an eligibility criteria for them? And you don't have to make a decision on that tonight, we'll still be getting out, obviously, the bulk of the, the letters will still be going out, but it is one of those areas we anticipate that, um, once the letters start going out, people are gonna say, well, what about me? And so, these are areas that we anticipate that we're gonna need some additional guidance in.
So, to me, it seems like we're building off of the criteria that we created back in September.
Yeah, either clarification, or do you wanna expand upon it? So for example, um, there are, I'm aware of at least one individual for sure who had contacted us via email prior to the meeting on the twenty-fifth, clearly after the end of last year, um, who, other than the fact that they didn't come to the meeting, had a similar comment, I'm, you know, I didn't get notified of this, or I was beyond the two and a half mile criteria. And so the question is, how do you handle those people before the twenty-fifth, but after maybe the end of twenty twenty-four, after there was a reasonable immediate response period?
So we're talking, we're talking twelve months between contacts, essentially.
Yeah, where's that, where's that reasonable, is there a reasonable cutoff for somebody, or do you think it's appropriate to set a reasonable cutoff after they would have received the notice?
Well, the two and a half to three and a half would not have been.
And that's, and that, that's the issue there, is they, they did not receive a notice from us, because our area of influence that was determined, our potential impact that we should be responding to, as determined by the DNR, was two and a half miles, so we did not send notices beyond that.
So I guess the broad question is, how do we categorize them as far as?
Are they eligible, or are they eligible or not? So what we would do at this point?
If they're in the two and a half to three and a half?
If they're in the two and a half, are they eligible for, for the, I don't wanna say automatic, but the threshold is relatively low. They, we had sent out, they sent back a questionnaire that, and the symptoms they indicated are consistent with what our findings were to indicate that they were impacted. Do you wanna add that? Or, if you don't, it doesn't mean that we may not respond to those, it just means that we will evaluate those on a case-by-case basis, and the threshold for the information we request may be higher based on that case-by-case evaluation. We won't be handling them as a category, we'd be handling them as an individual.
I think we handle, I mean, if we're gonna go and, and not put this off till two weeks from now, I think we handle everything as a case-by-case.
So bring them all in?
Yeah. So the, so.
I think it's fair.
So we stick with the original criteria that you identified, and anybody that falls outside of that criteria would be handled on a case-by-case basis?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I just maybe advocate for one proud, what about it, individual, one for sure who didn't? 'Cause the council said, well, if you came to the council meeting, you're now eligible, regardless, as long as you're under three and a half miles. What if they did contact us prior to the meeting on the twenty-fifth via email?
Then, so are you asking, do they get the letter, or do they get case-by-case?
Do, do they, do they get the, well, in this case, the people that are getting the letter, we sent a questionnaire to and they followed up. In this case, they would be eligible to the point that we would send them a questionnaire, and if the, and if the information we get indicates that they're consistent with what we think was the aquifer test impact, then they would be eligible for the three hundred bucks. So, anybody that's not getting a letter right now is somebody we would have to follow up with, most likely regardless, to some degree. It's just a question of whether or not they are potentially eligible, or it's just gonna be, you go in the all-other pile and we'll just take it on a case-by-case basis.
But they did contact us, and you feel that it warrants the questionnaire?
Um, if you, I would suggest that whether somebody, if somebody contacted us prior to the meeting on the twenty-fifth, I would pose the question to the council, whether they did it by email or actually showed up at the meeting, is there a difference between the two?
I don't think there's.
I don't think there's a difference.
Nope.
So, based on that, I would suggest then the guidance would be anybody that contacted us, regardless of method, prior to the meeting on the twenty-fifth would be eligible, and if they haven't already filled out a, so we would put them into the process, and if it's consistent with our findings, and they have otherwise the other, meet all the other criteria, that they would be eligible for the three hundred dollar compensation. Anybody that contacted us after the twenty-fifth would go into the all-other complaints pile that we would, um, address on a case-by-case basis.
I think that's fair, especially given that we didn't have a. I think that's fair, especially given that we didn't have a end timeline in that original notification letter, which we couldn't have seen coming.
Yeah, and under that circumstance, according to what I, the information that we have in the memo. Um, that would be an additional, and just to check with you, Luke, that would be an additional nine individuals.
Correct.
I think that's as fair as it can be.
Okay.
Even without, I think, you know, if, if we had everybody here, they would all agree to that.
Okay.
I think that's, because I, there's no way you could be any more fair than that.
Do you have any commentary or concerns, City Attorney? All right, so that's the direction that we needed tonight?
So we don't have to.
And that answers all three of your questions there for you?
Um, no, the last, well, it does to the extent, and I just want to confirm what I think the direction he gave, is that. If somebody contacts us now, regardless of circumstances after the twenty, any contact after the twenty-fifth, it goes into the all others. Pile.
Individual review.
Individual review, regardless of distance, regardless of what, but if you contacted us at this point.
So August twenty twenty-four to September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five are in the compensation.
Eligible, depending on findings, yes. Yep, so basically what we did is we said, okay, if we sent you a questionnaire and you followed up either previously or going forward. Because you made contact with us prior to September twenty-fifth and your symptoms. And you indicated that you had issues during the Oxford test, and they're consistent with our findings, you know, you meet those basic eligibility requirements. Then yes, you would be eligible. But if you are contacting us now after the twenty-fifth of this year. Um, or you don't follow up as appropriate, then no, you would not be eligible, just broadly stated.
And is there going to be a deadline on this new letter that's going out?
Yes, and it is, the council had given us direction that they would have a window in which they would have to respond.
And for clarification on anybody that would have incurred a cost above three hundred, that is also an individual review of their case.
Correct, there's a process for somebody that feels that the three hundred dollars is insufficient compensation for their circumstances. The letter will outline the process that they need to follow, and there will be a timeline, a timeline by which they need to, to do that. So, and then we'll review those on a case-by-case basis.
What kind of timeline are we giving them to gather all of their paperwork that they would need for proving their side to us?
I have to recall, I think it's thirty days.
I think that's what you decided.
Okay.
The direction he gave, so they, they basically have thirty days to respond to either.
Or a variance with explanation.
Yeah, sign the, they either have to sign the waiver and send it back within thirty days, or they have to. Um, indicate that they want to enter that other process within thirty days. And from there, it'll be as, as long as it takes to, to work through.
Do we all agree? Do we all agree?
Yeah, I think I have clear direction on that.
Was there any other updates you had?
Um, just what's in the packet, if there's any, any questions regarding any, anything else that was included there. Um. Paving was occurring out on Highlands at Eagleview today. Uh, sidewalk is, was wrapping up today at Parkway Meadows, so stuff's starting to, construction season is wrapping up, so.
Awesome.
All right, uh, community developments, can I speak on that?
Yep, so, uh, two things. Under, um, the general updates. Uh, last week, Renee, on behalf of the city, attended the annual commercial industrial real estate professionals event. In Minneapolis, basically, it's a good old marketing the city, recruiting developers event. Um, this is, event is one of the largest commercial real estate networking events in the year, within the region. And so it's one of the two, it's, it's one of the ones we attend annually to try and market the community. Um, also, uh, this, we did receive a formal petition related to the eighty-acre Sullivan property. Staff is working with the township attorney and has finalized, with a lot of work on Andrea's part and the township attorney's part and Renee's part. Have finalized drafts of the orderly annexation agreement, the joint powers agreement, and the pre-development agreement. Of which the develop, of which the township needs to approve all three, uh, to make it all work. Um, right now, staff intends to attend the twelve-two. Um, township board meeting to ask their consideration of those items. Um, at this point, we don't have any reason to anticipate any major issues with that. Um, there've, we've previously gone out to talk about the development and the general terms, and that all seemed to. Uh, they seem to respond favorably to that. Uh, the last item is that staff will be meeting with the DNR on Monday to discuss, uh, the adoption of the shoreline ordinance. As previously reported to the council. Um, we had received notice in the last year that we needed to adopt a shoreline ordinance. Um, as required by Minnesota State statute. And we are currently working through that, but it's also reported there are some difficulties. This statute, or the rules that they've established, kind of assume you're dealing with undeveloped areas. Not putting it in place after you have development around it. And, um, already, already land guidance that affects property significantly. And what we've kind of heard is that there's nobody currently in DNR staff, since this is a relative, this rule has been in place for a long time. They really haven't been through this before, where somebody's come in where they're already a developed or partially, you know, they're already a developing city, where this is being put in place. So we have to work through some of those nuances of what's going to be required. So our staff is currently working on that. We're also going to be bringing in our consulting planner, who will be primarily assigning this project to going forward. Based on our current staffing limitations. Um, that's all I have on that. And then I also have an update on the planning commission discussion on residential lot standards. So the planning commission is having a discussion about whether or not we need to make changes to our residential lot standards. As the council's fully aware, the industry for detached housing has continued to change. And that, um, taking a look at what's appropriate for our community. But also looking at what our standards need to be in order to be able to comply with met council density requirements, um, within the community. And so right now, the status of the, they had their first discussion here, um, in October. And the status of the current discussion is that. Um, under our current R one, our lowest density, um, district, uh, the minimum lot size, size is eighty feet. There is no proposal to make the changes to that standard for that district. Because it's believed there are locations and circumstances where larger lots. Um, would not be only desirable but most appropriate. For example, lots that have slopes, um, natural, other areas that have natural features that may require large lots. Um, just general locations within the community. However, uh, the commission is discussing that. For the R two district, um, which does provide for, um, smaller densities. The R two district currently provides for a seventy-foot minimum lot width. There is discussion of moving that to sixty-five feet. And then expanding the areas in which R two could be located within our comprehensive plan. So right now, R two districts are primarily where they can be, um, zoned by right. Um, or, or more eligible, or current eligibility is along, um, primarily transportation corridors. And this would open that up. Um, the specific criteria haven't been identified, but opening up the geography in which R two districts could be applied. So, any questions on that? Okay, so they'll, they'll work through that, and once they have a, uh, a more defined framework, it'll come to the city council for feedback.
Actually, the front and the, I'm just kind of reading through the, the graph that they have here. The setbacks, will those stay the same then, or are they going to adjust those as well?
My understanding is the setbacks would remain where they are today. Would, they would be, quite honestly, it'd be consistent with what we're approv, what we've approved in some of our three most recent, our two most recent subdivisions, so. Um, no, no parks update. Um, we did meet in October for C C E C. I think the minutes do a pretty good job of describing the activity, um, at the meeting. Uh, one of the things that we talked about was composition of the. Um, C C E C completing the survey of the current organizations that are. Even if not actively participating, um, have been part of the organization over, um, the long haul. And basically finding out who wants to continue to participate and to what level. So recommendations can be brought back to the council related to revising the composition. Uh, the other key area was just talking about availability of volunteers and people to help out. Um, the core of the C C E C has continued to shrink over the years, and it's really just for people that do. Most of the heavy lifting. And, um, the idea is that if we revise the composition, we might be able to get new blood and more hands. And which would, um, which is something that's needed within the organization. Kate, do you, you were at the meeting, or no?
I wasn't there.
Oh, sorry.
Nope, that's okay, um, yeah. Um. There's a fight rescue on the agenda, but.
Yep.
But I would agree, we need to obviously. Make a new composition of hopefully other people or businesses or residents or something that want to help out with the C C E C.
Yeah, the general trend that we're finding is that people are happy to contribute financially. But actually getting man-hours towards stuff is getting increasingly difficult. Um, so on one part, good, but on the other part, it becomes challenging, because if you don't have the people, you can't put on the events regardless of how well it's funded. Skills tomorrow morning. It's, uh, basically making the legislative platform pitch to our legislators. I, of course, will be giving the perennial pitch on the I thirty-five interchange. Following that, though, will be the RTF board meeting, and I think this is the, where do we go from here? As I've previously reported to the council, there are multiple members of the RTF who've indicated that they. Are not looking to continue to participate in the RTF after twenty twenty-seven for similar reasons to why we aren't. Um, looking to do that either. So I think this is really, um, everybody putting their cards on the table and then a discussion about where things need to go from, really need to go from here.
Um, s- quick question, score a moment. As far as, um, the I thirty-five, when they came out that morning.
Mm-hmm.
Has there been any feedback yet about what their findings were or what they're thinking? When they came out and did the study at six thirty in the morning?
It wasn't a study. This was basically getting important people to come out and see the issue, to see the situation, circumstances first, firsthand.
Okay.
So this was a straight up, I want you to come look at it. So it wasn't a formal study, um, and it really was a lobbying effort to try and. Create firsthand knowledge of what's going on out there.
Do we feel that we finally got our point across, or how do you feel it went?
I feel that there was acknowledgement of the issue, how that translates into funding within, within priorities within the agency. And for the state, remains to be seen.
Got to do fifty first, right?
Sorry, that was a score on the.
Should we skip over I thirty-five and, or?
Well, we're not meeting till the new year, so we can skip it.
Okay, okay, nothing there for that. How about, um, back to executive committee or service delivery? Is there anything talking points on that?
No, service delivery, uh, is scheduled to meet on Monday. There's only one item, and it's really just kind of wrap up on the open burning. Um, permitting, going to online with the DNR within the county. So, um, depending on the availability of the speaker. We may or may not, um, have the meeting on Monday. It might get, that item might get postponed to December, so.
Like I said, nothing on I thirty-five? L M C Metro Cities Policy Committee?
Those are done for the year, so that will be coming off the agenda until next year.
Okay, uh, any discussion?
Nothing for me?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye, adjourned.